Okay, at this time, I'm going to open the public here.
Surprise?
Not surprised.
Hello there.
Hello.
Alderman.
My questions may be dated because of the fact that we just got some new information here, but some other will. So, let me try to take the easy ones first. First off, how long is the time?
Right hand.
Three minutes.
Three minutes, gotcha. The Alderman's stipends, where did they show up? Pardon me? Where did the Alderman?
The Alderman's stipends.
Yeah, they'll show up in the budget where?
In three different places, right? Those are just in general. Just general, general.
General.
Yes.
Thank you. General, if I were on guessing, salary wages? Are they a separate line item?
No, they're just in the salary and wages.
Gotcha.
They're not stipends, they're salary.
That's enough, before you know the facts of the matter, I just, I didn't see a line item for them. I couldn't find in the old budget, maybe it's in the new. I couldn't find in the old budget, a balance information for water and sewer. Is there someplace where that exists? Water and sewer only, like all the other funds have their own. Water and sewer, do they have their own? Water and sewer in the old budget, page eleven.
It is page eleven.
Pardon me, still page eleven?
Yes.
Okay, on there, I couldn't see where there was a summary of that which related only to water and sewer. Is there someplace where that exists?
Can I address this question?
Yes, because I'm not sure I understand.
I understand page eleven, I guess so with the budget for water and sewer.
Very good.
And the gas is behind it.
And the what?
The gas fund is separately also on page.
Agreed. But like, if you take page five, you'll see that at the bottom, it has fund balances and so on, it tells you the activity related to that department only. Yet I didn't see that summarization for water and sewer in eleven.
See page eleven at the bottom?
Uh, the bottom is fifteen million dollars, that won't be water and sewer.
No, that is the fund balance. It does not project, it does not show the full assets, which is plant and service and power and charts and such. This is just dealing with beginning fund balance equity, plus or minus the net income is ending fund balance.
Oh, so that fifteen million dollars is really?
It's not necessarily cash, because it's not.
Well, we hope we have assets in there.
Right. Now, there are, these are break the old assets, less depreciation, there's liabilities, notes, mortgages. This is simply the difference between what you own and what you owe is equity.
Okay, I'm out of time, so I'm going to do three quick typos. And if that's important, you guys change it, if not, everybody knows what it means. On page one, you have a T, hanger rental, down near the bottom. Hanger, H-A-N-G-E-R. I'm sure that it's A-R, since it's talking about aviation. Is that correct?
Okay. I guess it is.
You don't see, uh, this is the old one.
That's the X dollar.
A-R is the X dollar.
A-R, so you have E-R, I'll change that.
Okay.
All right, and then the second one is, on page two, you have reappraisal cost to Oakland County, I guess that's reappraisal.
Okay.
Okay.
Fix that.
And then on page five, you, this is a, three columns, it talks about gas. Since we have a natural gas department, is that gas gas, or is that gas gasoline? A suggestion, somebody take a look at that, decide which one it really is.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, at this time, we will open office meeting to order. I suppose we do our files. House Mayor Dale. Alderman Elder.
Here, here.
Alderman Plankford.
Here.
Alderman Linder.
Here.
Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderman Regal.
Here.
Alderman Ziegler. House Mayor Dale. Okay. Next on the agenda are the budget amendments. I know you guys just received the amendments, you had the budget before, there were a few, I mean, columns with the amendments were on there. I don't know if y'all had any time to already look at those at all, about the questions that you had last time, but...
Just, just tell us the changes. Moving to good.
The changes are primarily, the projected twenty-three, twenty-four projected numbers are substantially stronger than the word, uh, last time we did it. That is just about carved in stone, not quite yet. But, uh, the secondary numbers are, uh, we've got amended budget, we'll look at that in just a little bit. Are we talking about the amended budget, or are we?
Right here.
The big change is the very first top number on the upper right of page one. You now see one nine, one point nine oh four. That was one point eight two five, I believe, for carpet tax, assuming that you will approve the recommended municipal increase in the tax rate. There are a few notable changes on page four. The airport aviation fuel, we incorrectly had one hundred and ten thousand, and that has been reduced by sixty thousand. To be more in line with what the projected revenue is, uh, we removed sixty thousand dollars off that. As your income increases, ideally, you're going to have a lot more fuel sales. That number will actually go up in a limited next year.
Mayor?
Going back, twenty-three, twenty-four projected, that's a year ago. Why do we still have a projected?
So, because the software complicated matters beyond what you would really expect. There's, uh, the twenty-three audit was finally accepted in May. We couldn't finalize twenty-four until we finalized twenty-three. Twenty-four is, uh, the preliminary numbers are with the auditor. The final number should be with the auditor the next day or so.
Okay, so, what about twenty-three, twenty-four? Is that what you're saying, it'll be final in the next two or three days?
Yes.
Okay. So, twenty-four, twenty-five, we're looking for the file to be a year from now?
Oh, no. No, this one's going to be substantially closer. We've got, uh, we've learned how to work with bugs in the software, I don't know if they're simple bugs as it is. Just getting corrections, maybe understanding where things should be, uh, leading up, learning that process better. So, I fully expect that the twenty-five will be given to the auditors in very early October. That is the goal, and that is the intent, to get that done. We, we together have learned so much about the software, and where we can expect the corrections we made by the local government, other than the next coming months. Get that fixed.
Was the old software?
The old software had its own set of rules.
Okay.
That, that would have, any accounting understandings, most people understand is you have a two, a two entry account method. You always have a debit with a credit. But the software that we had before, you can make that one, a one sided entry. And that's just very incredible.
Yeah.
And every year, in September, we failed to show one report or one payroll run, for some reason. In September, you'd have to naturally add one more payroll, a little bit of printing. It was printed, but it wouldn't post it to the software. Then there were other items, so...
Thank you.
Uh, let's see. So, we're talking about the amendments. I know we're talking about the budget right now. Trying to think of any more significant changes. None really come to mind, I think. But with the, if you look at the bottom of page four, bottom right corner, the last number on the last column. But two numbers up in that, you see a fifty-six thousand, three hundred and sixty-five. That was a negative eighty-four thousand, I believe. By adding an additional income for carpet tax, and reducing the projected expense on aviation fuel, went from a negative eighty-four, I think it was, to fifty-six. If all the numbers came out exactly like they are, then the city will prosper by about fifty-six thousand.
Excuse me, over forty thousand negative on the amended budget, second column, for this year. What was that? On page four? Just next to the fifty-six thousand.
Oh. That forty thousand is, uh, the amended budget. If everything... Going back to the, the original budget, uh, you'll see two hundred and fifty-four thousand, you know, right there in the middle of the middle column. The forty thousand doesn't mean that you're actually going to lose four thousand. What you're doing is, there are things in accounts table that we don't have right now. We know about what your projected expenses will be, first, the last field bill, last, uh, uniforms bill. That will come in July, for projecting those numbers in these numbers, because it's an expense of the June. I just haven't got the bills yet for, um, a lot of those expenses. So, what it is, I've gone through each item, if you look on, uh, page one of your proposed budget amendments, you got increases and decreases on just about every line. So, that's just where we had original protection, just pick out one. Grants income. The second, um, so, the number's down on page one, four hundred and fifteen thousand. You never know exactly how many grants you're going to give, as you file for grants during the year. With fifty-four hundred and fifteen, you actually got about six oh three. So, we had an increase by five hundred and eighty-eight thousand. So, all the expenses, your, your projected numbers, if they had been close to budget, then there would be very few adjustments in there, very few amendments, but... Going back to the first page, uh, page four, on the budget, now that's simply allowing for unknowns. So, it's not going to come anywhere near a negative, but just being, make sure that the town is upon its state statute, and that all expenses were appropriated. Uh, there's a, just, just a safe buffer for each category. Each major category is what you're basically counting on. So, the major category has to be a positive appropriation. So, just to be safe, because your fund balance is so strong, I've left a lot of buffers in those just in case. But no, it's not going to be, because I probably left, you know, roughly a hundred and twenty thousand. So, I just to be sure that we covered everything. Or you'll find that on each button. Another significant change is just a classification. If you look on airports, which is on page four. If you look under airports, on the original copy, miscellaneous had... The projected number was miscellaneous was around two hundred and four thousand, I believe it was. Well, I haven't had time to go through and see what some of those expenses were. We pulled out equipment. I take that back, I'm thinking about the projected twenty-three, twenty-four. Last time we met on that one, that projected line was about a hundred, two hundred and five thousand. Got into literally what it was, and that was first is the land, so, part of the audit, getting ready for the auditors to try to get as, the miscellaneous as low as possible, so it's best informed, uh, the public. So, land and site development were included in the miscellaneous, and that was pulled out. So, that's more information. While you're there, look at equipment in the projected column for airport, that's tried to read the equipment, one time purchase. And I believe there was some grants for that, that offset that expense. At least departed. Believe another change is on page one, right by the middle, where it says ARCA funds, that's a grant that you've got. Originally, that projected number was not three hundred thousand, it was just blank. But I believe that you've got equipment that's going to be deemed appropriate for the expenditures of those funds. Those funds that are going to be saved at the end of twenty-two. And then, they were not spent, so it's been carried on balance sheet as a deferred grant. So, as you spend the grants, you recognize the income that's been on balance sheet. So, that's three hundred thousand dollars, I feel fairly solid that there's going to be at least that many expenditures towards recognition, uh, recognizing three hundred thousand revenue.
On page five, the street aid. What rolled that up from the proposal, sixty-two thousand to a hundred and one thousand? Are they amended, or are they?
Oh, they did. Sorry, but I'm following your question.
Well, the one that we got last week. Down there at the fund, uh, balance ending.
Okay.
The proposal sixty-two, seven, seventy. Now, it went up to one oh one, six oh five.
I don't have the original that you had last week.
Well, I can answer it, nevermind. I, there's some, well, no.
What is your negative number?
Well, material and supplies was in on last week's, and it was added on, it's a handout number, forty-five thousand dollars for, uh... Materials and supplies, so, that's the difference right there. Yep. Okay.
On page six, on the projected, that was here from your original copy last week. It only got clearer today. I believe it's showing four hundred and sixty-three thousand grants, and only about two thousand in expenditure, not two hundred, two hundred and some odd thousand in building improvements, but... Reclassifications were made, and effort was looked, to see why it was not fully expended, but, uh, that came to light, so, there's a fund that's closed at the end of twenty-one, twenty-four. General debt service did not change at all, I think. It may have shown four hundred and, I think it showed four hundred and fifty thousand proposed, twenty-five, twenty-six, sales tax, but that was lower. So, we increased that to four hundred and seventy-five. If we ideally, think it's just still a bit low, we're, with the servant on revenue. On water and sewer, in the projected column, have water relief fees.
Can we back up to page nine, please? Nine? Well, nevermind, because the proposal's the same. amended, I was going to ask about the amended budget for twenty-four, twenty-five. Nevermind, because your proposal's the same, nevermind.
On page ten, we had some unadjusted numbers that now have been determined. We have water leak, water relief fees of a small amount. We have water link, water relief fee expense of quite a bit. Because you collect those water fees, the water relief fees, that's been reclassified to revenue, and the expenses, the expenses that were in the projected column are netted against the revenue, so... Increased revenue, decreased revenue, because water leak, water relief fee is not a true revenue to contain on, towards a true expense, it's just a, here in Asia, for the ones that you collected forward. So, you bring it in and put it back right back out, so it's not a true expense or a true revenue, it's just, uh, netted within water. One issue that we're having with software is, if you look on your amended tab on page ten. You'll see that we got fifty thousand in interest and penalties. On the original budget, on the twenty-two, twenty-three budget, we had probably in the date of thirty thousand in penalties and interest. This software has not yet allowed us to track those revenues, it's just called it in water. Ideally, we can get some help with the supplier to plug those revenues, so that we can again track that that producer. So, I'll just amend the budget to match what you're projecting, since we're, we can't even follow where the true penalties and interest is.
What's the, on page ten, the master meter fairview, uh, twenty-four, twenty-five was two hundred and fifty-six thousand. And then, on the, uh, what we got today, it's only sixteen thousand.
I looked at that specifically today, because it's unusual to find a large expense in that category. So, what I found was that there was a two hundred and some odd thousand dollar piece of equipment. So, I capitalized it, put it on the balance sheet, instead of running it through the expense. But the carp, with the water sewer and the natural gas funds, those are proprietary funds, it's, as opposed to governmental funds, so they, they're run like a business. And so, you capitalize major equipment, all the plants and, uh, plants and service, all your piping and such is on balance sheet, so it's not an expense. So, the way you account for the expense is through depreciation over years. So, that particular equipment is going to increase your depreciation in third year. Because they're also going to be probably a good year asset, so it's not going to hit the bottom line just as long as it's, uh...
So, we'll get depreciation over X number of years, right?
Correct, correct. That's also true of gas, bringing a couple up. In twenty-twenty-four, this is the year twenty-twenty-four, you had purchased a two gas trucks, bucket trucks, and then those are not an expense on a balance sheet. So what we're talking about, uh, if you look on the page ten, let's go with the budget column. Very last item on page, on column number two, two hundred and ten thousand, one sixty-nine. If it's true maintenance and repair, then it goes through the P and L. If it's a purchase of a fixed asset or restoring an asset, since the full doeser, it substantially increases its life, and we capitalize that through the balance sheet. So we're projecting all of that equipment, because you have so much equipment at the water plant. It's highly likely that you're gonna have two hundred and ten thousand. Ideally, you won't have that much. And see that projected twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, it's only ninety-five thousand.
Joel, there's nothing else, anything else significant, I may go leave it up and get back up for public comments and then entertain a motion.
Sure.
Are there any other public comments? You're so low over there. Okay. Okay, at this time, I would entertain a motion, um, to pass the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget as amended.
No commotion, very careful, but.
A motion made by Alderman Proctor, do you have a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, second by Alderman Bruce O'Leary. Is there more discussion? Okay, Mr. Nuss do a roll call vote, please. Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderman Riebel.
Yes.
Alderman Elver.
Yes.
Alderman Lankford.
Yes.
Alderman Linder.
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, motion passes. Now I will have to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Actually, amended budget, awesome.
Alright, okay.
Amended budget must be pretty awesome.
Okay, okay, and then I need a motion to pass the amended budget.
I'll make the motion.
A motion made by Alderman Linder, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Lankford, going through a roll call vote. Alderman Riebel.
Yes.
Alderman Elver.
Yes.
Alderman Lankford.
Yes.
Alderman Linder.
Yes.
Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, and other discussion?
Adjourn.
Okay, motion to adjourn. In a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, this meeting is adjourned.